And you can find more information on the county's HR website. Feel free to share that information with any candidates that you know of. Um, I'm also pleased to announce that Norma Jane was selected as the county's second deputy county administrator. And Norma is most recently as the county's budget director. The county also has a, an RFP out for a grant consulting firm to assist the county in identifying and applying for available federal, state and other funding opportunities. So that um, RFP has been posted on BidNet. The closing date is February sixteenth. And then lastly, at our last legislature meeting, um, provided an overview of the highlights of county operations from two thousand and twenty-two. And that presentation is posted on the county's website. It gives a, a nice overview of the work done by our various county departments and what was achieved in two thousand and twenty-two. So I think that's it for me. There are probably other things I may have missed, but feel free to ask questions if you have them.
Darby has asked whether she could be given the floor at this juncture because she has to leave. And sure, Darby.
Yeah, I just wanted to jump in uh, quick to make it. I, I failed to see that you don't have privilege of the floor on your meeting agenda. So I had to just jump in. Uh, as Lisa just let you know, um, we, we did hire La Berge Group for the building code study. So the three main contacts on that that you might hear from are Kathleen Rooney, Ben Sidon and Rob Rankle. And so we, we just are wrapping up the survey. So appreciate all of your time. I know it was, it was a long survey and a lot of questions. But the goal is to take that information and then have a really productive, um, some roundtable sessions. So they'll be held in about a month from now. We'll, we'll do those in person. And uh, we'll be spending time at those sessions talking about workflows, needs and barriers and opportunities for collaboration. So uh, for the, the couple municipalities that haven't gotten those surveys in, if you can get those back to Kathleen in the next day or two, uh, to really inform this process and make sure we, we have all the information going for, forward. And I just wanted to reiterate, I talked to a couple, um, code officers yesterday. And we really want this study to meet your needs as a municipality. You know, what are, what are your challenges in code enforcement? And what do you see uh, as opportunities moving forward? Uh, we do not have a predetermined outcome for this. So you know, we really want your input on the process. And so the other announcement I have uh, in the past are, um, we've held some information sessions. That we did in two thousand and nineteen and two thousand and twenty about the funding opportunities that we have in our department from parks and trails and housing and, and some of the tourism programs. And so we're planning to do some in-person and probably a virtual session in early February about those funding opportunities. And so uh, not quite ready to announce dates yet, but um, expect to see those in about a week. So that's all I had. Uh, didn't mean, didn't mean to jump, jump in on you, Lisa. And so I'll, I'll take any questions if anyone has them.
Early February is next week.
I know. I, it's, it's like I wanted to have that date for you already, but I just don't. And then we'll just, it'll be quick. Um, if anyone attended in the past, we had a couple consultants who do uh, grant work. And we had them, we'll have them attend the meeting and talk about the types of um, opportunities they provide. So we're, we're just kind of hammering out the dates and availability for those.
Thanks. It sounds like it'll be helpful.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. So at this point, Jay is sort of the featured speaker for the day here. To talk about real property tax exemptions.
Well, good afternoon, everyone. Thanks for having me here. Um, when um, I think Rod emailed me and asked to do a presentation on exemptions again. I said, well, do you want the one oh one, the two oh one or the three oh one? So um, I've already done the one oh one. So you don't get the spiel of there's two hundred and some odd real property tax exemptions. Raymond from the Vienna Convention to the Real Property Tax Law and all that good stuff. You all have graduated from that one oh one by now. So now we're into the two oh one, which is just, these are kind of the main exemptions that uh, are up for local options that we can offer. And I went through and kind of gave my um, gist on what each of these are and how they can benefit some of your constituents. So I also included hyperlinks within these. So if you click on the blue uh, RPTL, Real Property Tax Law, it'll take you to the assessor's cheat sheet that the Department of Taxation and Finance came up with. No two tax exemptions are the same despite the same people writing them. So there's different requirement for when something is due, uh, what happens when the property sells. Um, so there's a lot of different nuances to it. So um, when I took over uh, as director, my father gave me the, or when I took over as um, assistant director, my father gave me the advice that always have those five black books just sitting right on your desk. So I always go to the Real Property Tax Law just to confirm what I may have thought that I, I knew. Um, I think one question that I get a lot is, and I, I also included kind of my big spreadsheet of different exemptions that are out there. And one question that I get a lot is why haven't more places opted into this? And to be honest, I, I don't know. Um, when a new exemption comes about, I will, I'll notify all of the taxing jurisdictions that are eligible to um, either adopt it or opt out of it. Um, typically I wait until after the county does something, uh, because I've learned over my years that the first question I get is, um, what did the county do? If time permits, um, I'll wait until the county makes the decision. And not that the towns, the villages and the schools have to do what we do. But you know, as I said, over history, you kind of learn um, what you all want to hear from. So we kind of wait on that. This year I didn't do that for some of these exemptions. Um, the volunteer firefighter and ambulance um, worker exemption. I didn't wait because I knew it was pressing on you. And I also knew that it probably wouldn't be signed until after the election. So it was just signed at the end of December. Uh, the county has taken it to uh, it's passed the Government Operations Committee. We've scheduled the public hearing and I believe on the seventh, we'll hold the public hearing and the legislature will consider um, consider adopting that exemption. Um, but we also, well, you, you know by now, I'm not advocating for or against exemptions. Um, but one thing, in order to make this worthwhile, we need at least the towns to opt into this as well. If the county were to opt into it, um, for instance, in Newfield, your, the volunteers' house would have to be worth about one point two million dollars in order to make the property tax exemption more beneficial than the two hundred dollar income tax credit that they can claim. You only get one or the other. But if we were to add the town also adopting that exemption, that drops to a two hundred and eighty thousand dollar house in order to uh, be able to have a more beneficial property tax exemption as opposed to that two hundred dollar uh, income tax credit. Um, with the town and the county, if both of them were to adopt it, um, you know, the three hundred and fifty thousand dollar house would save somewhere between um, two hundred and forty dollars to three hundred and twenty dollars. So we're not talking a whole lot more money than that two hundred dollar uh, income tax credit that they can already get. The city of Ithaca is a little bit different. Um, they'd save six hundred dollars on there. But according to my information, the city doesn't really have any volunteer firefighters or EMT workers that are volunteers within their departments. And that's one of the nuances of this law is you have to be a resident of the municipality that is served by the volunteer company that you serve with. So if you volunteer in Lansing but live in the city, you're not going to be able to get that exemption, even if everybody opts it. Um, the other exemption that we're also kind of tracking here now is the uh, the state finally allowed us to increase the uh, senior and low disability income limits. Uh, the county moved that up for a fifty percent exemption for thirty-five thousand. And then about every thousand dollars of decrease of income, it's a reduction of five percent to where if your income's under forty-three thousand four hundred, you get a five percent exemption. Um, I know the town of Enfield has already adopted the same limits. The uh, town of Lansing. And I know I've talked to some of you as well who are also considering it. I know um, uh, some of my staff is going out to Newfield School tonight. Uh, I'm going to back to T-Berg Schools next, next Tuesday on the seventh. So I get to go to two meetings at once. I'll be at the legislature meeting and at T-Berg School. So that'll be fun. But so there's, you know, if um, you have any specific questions on any of these exemptions, um, I don't really want to go down through each of them. But um, if you want me to, I will. But in the interest of time and not hearing myself talk more, um, we'll do whatever you want. Questions?
Thanks, Jay. I um, let's see. Yeah, um, I, I, I wanted to circle back to what you said about volunteer firefighters or ambulance workers that serve in one municipality. It, it, does that go down to municipality? So if they say serve in one town, um, but live in a different town, that means they would not get the, the town tax exemption. Is that right?
Correct. They, they have to live in the town that is served by the uh, district that they volunteer at.
I see. Okay.
And there's, there's not, the, the New York State didn't provide a whole lot of um, instructions as how to do this. Uh, last night I met with, that's not Tuesday night, I met with the uh, fire chiefs, um, just to talk over this. And one thing that the state uh, put in is that all of the local municipalities had to come up with a way to verify who is an active volunteer or not. And to be honest, I said, I'm not giving up that responsibility. I'm the assessor. I'm the one who determines that. And then I thought and said, no, that's not the best way. These are um, dedicated individuals and I can trust them. So when I talked to the fire chiefs, each one of them has a little bit different bylaws as to what determines what is an active volunteer. Some places were using the low SAP system and you had to get fifty points. I didn't want to deny someone if they only had forty-nine points for one year. So when talking to the fire chiefs, um, they're going to supply to me, the volunteer applies on who they consider an active volunteer. You know, I put in, in their trust that, you know, their social members and people who don't show up, they're not going to include. Where, you know, they're public servants too. So that's why I'm, I'm comfortable ceding my authority to grant exemptions to them.
To follow up on Mark's comment, there are some um, people who, sometimes a service area for, for a fire department doesn't correspond with municipal boundaries. But it's the municipal boundaries that govern. Right?
Correct. Yeah. See, yeah. So there's um, a couple of fire districts that um, cross over between Dryden and Caroline, I believe. And as long as that crosses over even one parcel, you know, if someone were to be, and I'm just throwing out, you know, if you're in uh, Varna and it crosses over into Caroline by one parcel and that volunteer lives in Caroline, hey, I'm good to go to grant that exemption. You know, the, the intent is to get exemptions to volunteers. I don't want a technicality of something kind of that odd to, to not allow it.
Yeah, Jay, have you had any conversations with your counterparts in Skyler or Seneca County about their process as of this point?
Um, I did in uh, Skyler and I'm sorry, Seneca County. Um, when I talked to the super, when Irene talked to the supervisor, um, I almost want to say that he said that they've already adopted it in Seneca County. Um, I gave him the information to talk about it for the town of Covert. But one also thing is that fire districts can also choose to allow this exemption as well. So if the T-Berg Fire District were to allow it, it would be applicable for fire district taxes throughout those uh, three different towns. But unfortunately, with such a low tax rate for the fire district, they might as well take advantage of that income tax credit instead. We, we, we really got to get a pool of taxing jurisdictions into this to make it worthwhile to switch over from that income tax credit. I mean, let's, let's face it, this would have been so much easier if New York State just doubled that income tax credit. That, I mean, the amount of hours that I've put into this and everybody across the state is putting into this, just double that and we cover pretty much everybody up to the four hundred and fifty thousand dollar house.
So we're, we're a fire protection district. So I think the municipalities still have to opt in. And I've had some questions about Skyler County. So I don't know if you've spoken to anyone over there because our fire company does have uh, good sized number of members that live in Skyler County and they're trying to get information. And it sounds like um, information is, is harder to find um, over there.
Yeah, I, I think the last time that I had talked to Kelly Anderson, their Director of Real Property Tax Services, they were waiting until next year. Um, with the governor signing in at the end of December and trying to get everything on board, it was really a task. And I know a lot of counties were just said, we'll kick the can down to the two thousand and twenty-four assessment role and see how things shake out. But I, I knew the demand and wanted to get out in front of this a little bit more so that we could adopt it for two thousand and twenty-three and at least be able to provide that incentive on the two thousand and twenty-four town county taxes.
Okay, great. Thanks, Jay.
Uh, Caitlin?
Hi, yes. Um, so Ulysses is um, is holding our public hearings at our, at our next town board meeting on both the exemptions. Um, and I, I would assume they're going to pass um, based on feedback from my board. Um, but my question was, Jay, are you going to be providing? I, I think that, that, that point about that it's actually a much more beneficial to take the two hundred dollars rather than the exemption is really critical language that would be very helpful if we could push that out to our constituents. Because I would hate for somebody to take the exemption and then have lost, you know, left money on the table essentially. Um, and that wasn't something that, that I was, I, I, that I understood until you, you, you expressly uh, detailed it. So because if there's language we could use in our newsletters, things like that, that'd be really helpful.
Yeah, I can send you out. I, I just did a memo this morning for the fire chiefs um, that shows that sweet spot. Um, and the way I have it designed is, you know, in column one, it'll show what would be the sweet spot of your house's value if just the county were to adopt it. And the only reason I put the county first is because I know that we're going to consider it on the seventh. And then the next column would be also what would be that sweet spot if the town also adopted it with the county. Now, the one tough part about this though, is that this is based upon last year's tax rates or the current two thousand and twenty-three tax rates. By the time the volunteer has to apply by March one, we don't know how much money you all are going to be spending and what that tax rate's going to be. So it's almost like a leap of faith in that you can look at it and you know, if the savings is only going to be two hundred and fifteen dollars, I'd almost recommend not doing it. Um, you know, an extra ten dollars or extra fifteen dollars may or may not be worth it. Um, but I, I will at least get that sweet spot out to you and I'll work through um, uh, Taylor to get that emailed out to you um, either tonight or tomorrow.
Thank you, Jay. Um, I don't, I'm not trying to, to, to circumvent anything on the schedule. Um, but I have to step away for about fifteen minutes and I'm going to pop my cyber update into the chat. So in case you get to that point before I get back. I don't want to hold anybody up. Thank you.
Joanne, you had a question? But you're muted.
I know. There we go. Uh, so we are having a public hearing tonight on, on both those exemptions. And uh, our fire chief is well aware of the two hundred dollar um, tax break versus the possibility of, of any kind of exemption. We've talked about it at the last board meeting. But have you sent that analysis to Mike Allinger, the sweet spot? Because I was not aware of where all those numbers hit.
Yep. No, I, I just did that this morning, got it out to um, the Department of Emergency Response. And then um, either Mike Stitley or Justin Van sent it out to everybody. Um, but I'll make sure that uh, I'll have Tammy email it real quick to Mike, just so that you all have it tonight. And I'll also get that right out to Taylor to get out to everybody as well.
I don't see any downside in approving this. I mean, they have the choice of either taking the exemption or the tax break, right? So I don't see any harm in approving it and we probably will.
Correct. I, there, I mean, there is no, there is no exemption if nobody applies. So if you don't apply for it, then you can take the tax credit. Um, this is the same thing that happened when um, we, we actually have this exemption in place for the village of Groton right now. But it only reduces the assessment by five hundred dollars. So for village tax purposes, like a three and a half dollar savings. Nobody signed up since they brought that income tax credit in. I don't even remember how long ago that was. So yeah, if it, it can't hurt, it can only help your volunteers.
Thank you.
Mike?
I guess just to clarify, you can have on your, the rules, the tax and the exemption and the individual gets to choose which way he goes? Or so they have the ability to choose. Okay.
Correct, yeah.
Okay. And then the other question is, you gave an example if there was the county and then one municipality went into it too. How about if all the municipalities went with it? Does that change your numbers that you create?
Um, no, because you're not going to live in multiple municipalities. Um, but the, the big one would be school district. You know, if just the Ithaca City School District opted into it, I think it was like a hundred and ten thousand would be the sweet spot for that house. So if you add in the county, if you add in one of the towns, then, then you're really talking savings here.
Yeah.
So if you have any friends on your school boards, let's, I can't advocate for or against, but you all can advocate for or against this, please.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, that was my question. School districts are also included.
Yeah, yeah. Any um, municipality and even the fire districts? And we're still trying to figure out if an ambulance district could do it as well.
Uh, the, there, there are two exemptions you were talking about. One was the, the firefighter and ambulance one. But yeah, the senior and uh, the low income disabled folks exemption. Does that have the same filing deadline for somebody to apply so that we'd have to get the law in place by you know, sometime in February in order for it to be effective for the twenty-four?
Yeah. Yeah, it would have to be in place by March one. Kind of the one good thing is everybody's already applying and you know, the county has that forty-three thousand four hundred limit right now. So as long as you don't go above that, um, we're able to kind of retroactively um, apply that limit if you were to increase it to the people that have already applied. If you went up to the state maximum and did it on February twenty-eighth, we're not going to have enough time to get those people notified and registered to that. Which also brings me, um, kind of off topic, but on topic to that. Um, the governor signed a, a law that we have to send out a second notice of the availability of the low income senior exemption. Um, the first notice went out January one. And we have to send out the second notice thirty days prior to March one. The way the law is written, it says every municipal corporation shall do this. So really the town should have, the schools, the villages. But we do things cooperatively here in Tompkins County. So the notice that the county's sending out, you all can uh, take credit for doing some of that as well. So I have, I'm always saying we're doing this cooperatively. So someone doesn't need four notices if you live in a village.
And those notices are like a month apart, right?
Correct. I, I just, and you know, it's on every tax bill that someone gets. It's just, um, I, I estimated it's costing uh, the taxpayers of New York State about two million dollars um, to send this out. So we're, I'm the chair of our legislative committee for my state organization. And we're vehemently, that word opposing it.
Your taxes at work is.
Yeah, well, there's, there's places that aren't doing it. Like I don't believe Seneca County is sending out the postcards. They just posted a notice on their webpage. And that's the second notice.
Mark?
So thanks, Jay, for making this um, this cheat sheet. It's really helpful. And then I just, I just wanted to bring up something that um, that I discussed with you. And that is the um, that it is helpful to your office. If uh, for, for us, we have um, you know, different um, passages of local laws on um, exemptions throughout our history. And it's kind of, kind of confusing. So um, so I'm certainly um, at your suggestion and, and Guy's suggestion, thinking of, of trying, of writing a a local law that, that includes all of them to, to, to make it clear to everybody what the town of Caroline offers in terms of exemptions. So.
Yeah, that, that was great. Um, you know, I gotta give Guy Crowe credit for Lansing. Uh, he went and took a look at some of old exemptions that they were looking at and kind of realized that not everything was done what he would consider proper. And if it, if Guy doesn't consider it proper, it probably wasn't done proper. Um, so it was just a way to kind of reaffirm, get it on everyone's attention again and just make sure. I'm, I'm not giving that kind of requirement to you all to do that. But it was like a, a good refresher um, activity just to kind of see what was on the books. And we've tried to get all of the resolutions from the towns, the schools, the villages. And you know, we have one uh, school district shared by three counties. We all had a different income scale. And finally, the school district was like, ah, we don't know what it is. Just use whatever Tompkins is using. I'm like, oh, that's, that's not good. That's, that's not, you know, if the comptroller's office ever came through and that's the email I have, just use whatever Tompkins is using. I don't know if that'll fly, but.
Yeah. I'm guessing your record may be better than our records as far as what, what was passed, uh, keeping track of it all.
Yeah, no, you, we, we worked great with um, the town clerks when, when we did that. And they're, they, they do keep great records. You know, there, there weren't many that we couldn't find. It was more, there was um, odd, I don't want to say odd school districts, but you know, I think there's nine or ten school districts that just touch our county. You know, the eleven parcels in Moravia and you know, whoever drew those lines just really shouldn't have drawn them. Um, but those are kind of the oddballs that don't keep up uh, to date and let us know what's happening.
Great. Thanks, Jay.
So the questions, would you?
Bob has a question.
On earlier conversation, Jay, uh, regarding the local advisory boards of assessment review. The Tompkins County Legislature voted recently uh, not to continue them uh, indefinitely. They could bring them back at some future time, but not this year. Uh, and I had mentioned the possibility, could local towns convene their own advisory boards of assessment review? Uh, you said you checked that out with the county attorney.
Yeah, um, I don't think it would be appropriate because we wouldn't be treating all of our residents the, the same. And that's one of our, our tenants of what my office does is everybody is treated the same. So if one town were to offer some sort of other um, pseudo-assessment review process, I, I don't think that really would be appropriate. It really would give that property owner a false sense of something may happen if they If they went there and uh provided their information to them.
Thank you.
All right, anything else? Thank you, Jay.
If you ever need anything, give me a yell. We're always willing to help, whatever analysis, whatever figures. It, I like working in numbers better than talking or writing, so anytime you can do some sort of spreadsheet, let me know.
Great, thanks Jay. Are you gonna share the the sweet spot analysis with Katrina for the group here?
Yeah, yeah, I was trying to get it up and running and talk at the same time, but on my little screen, I. Stuck in my basement, so I don't have my multiple monitor, so, but as soon as this is done, I'll hit send and Taylor will have it.
Perfect, thank you very much.
Right, cool. All right, have a good night all, take care.
Yeah, thanks. Which brings us to our reports. From the variety of committees that we have. Starting with Mark and Brad Van.
Oh, well, that'll, so this will be a very brief report. I don't really have any updates. Um, I emailed Nick earlier for an update on on what's going on with um. With the countywide study, so um, yeah, I don't, I don't really have anything to report, so.
I was gonna say the same thing, cuz the, we're basically waiting on Nick's actions in order to know how to proceed. Um, Caitlin gave us a little bit of a report in the chat, I think. Um, saying, or are you back? You just have a screen open. Um. They haven't, if you haven't seen it, she says, Ulysses is in the middle of interviewing the companies that responded to our um IT cybersecurity RFP. It involves three phases, assessment, implementation, and policy development. We've learned a lot about the process to create more secure systems. So my question that that we and Dan we have, and we'd be happy to provide our RFP to any other municipalities who are considering investing and improving their own systems. Anticipating about to settle on a company in February, we'll be sharing our experiences with other members of the. Uh, IT cybersecurity subcommittee, really committees, and anyone else who may be interested. You could email me at supervisor town of Ulysses. Dot gov, if you'd like a copy of the RFP. Which I shared, um, which she has also shared with me, so that's a worthwhile thing. For those of us who are, I'm wondering about this. Wayne Danby, how uh reassessing, you know, who who's our provider and whether or not. I'm gonna determine what's what's an appropriate level of security and how to pay for it. And this is an area ripe for collaboration, I think. Any questions about that? It's getting, we're not here, we can probably wait till she come back. If not, Mark, you're on again.
Okay. Um, sure, thanks. I'll uh another brief report, so um. The um, the applications have been received for the um. Countywide Emergency Services Program Manager and um so. Um, review of applications is underway and and Mike Stately is is leading the the process to. Um, to begin uh interviewing candidates, so.
Is there a timeline for that?
Um, I don't remember exactly. It's it's coming, it's, we'll be interviewing in February. And so I don't remember the exact dates that that Mike lined out, but.
But it sounds like it's not gonna be April, but.
Yeah. I don't know, Rorden, do you have anything to add to that?
We had uh seven applicants from various places throughout New York, Pennsylvania, New Jersey. I believe we're gonna, Mike just sent some emails. It looks like we're gonna be interviewing four of them via Zoom because of their geographic locations. We are targeting the week of. February the sixth for two days of Zoom interviews. And then whoever we like will invite back for some in-person interviews. And I think he's hoping to have someone hired uh by March. Which means the, it'll be on the on the ledge agenda if we find someone that we that we like that much.
Mm-hmm. It sounds like progress. Any questions from Mark or Rorden? Not Rod, Energy.
Uh, before that, I see Caitlin's back. Were there any questions? Caitlin, we all read your chat. So we're just seeing if there's any questions for you.
It's a multimedia experience.
Uh, seeing none. Uh, there's really no report from Energy. I uh, we're planning on meeting on March second at three o'clock. I'll make sure that a notice goes out to the full T-Cog Board. You may recall that the focus in twenty twenty-two was on solar power, solar energy issues. There seems to be interest in going back to community choice aggregation. Uh, so I think that might be the focus uh again, as it was in twenty twenty-one. Uh, for the Energy Committee, so stay tuned. But if anyone's interested, mark your calendars down for March second at three o'clock. That's it.
No questions for I? If not, um. Bob Lynch on transportation, what do you think?
Yes, um, I'll just give you a brief update uh on TCAT's continuing troubles, of which they uh discussed. Uh considerably at a January ninth uh Writers Advisory and Accountability Committee, Accessibility Committee, I should say, which I attended. And it was not an encouraging report, but it was an honest report. Uh, their spring schedule, which began this week and will run through the end of May. Uh, will have some further cutbacks. And their cutbacks dictated largely by necessity, largely because of uh. Supply shortages for bus parts uh and the inability to get some buses repaired. And a continuing shortage of drivers. They shared some statistics at that meeting. And uh it was during October alone, at one month, TCAT tallied seven hundred five. Uh missed trips due to bus shortages and another twenty-six due to driver shortages, and that's a continuing problem for them. Uh, there is a genuine downturn in ridership. And it's a downturn that is not demand related but supply related. If you don't have the buses and you don't have the routes. Then you don't have the ridership, so it's going down uh about thirty percent per year. According to Eric Amos, who's TCAT's manager, service development and planning. So uh, there were a lot of apologies, um, a lot of somewhat um discouragement. That they can't get back to their normal schedule, but they're trying their best and they're trying to remedy these problems. But at least for the spring, yeah, I guess it's going to be just kind of like it was last fall. That is too few buses and thus ridership is down, and that's my report.
Questions or comments? It's.
That's scary, Bob. I don't know.
It seems to be reflective of sort of a general problem with labor, shortages in lots of places. And I read, I read it was read yesterday, what unemployment rate in Tompkins County is, what, two point one or something? It's it's a. It's astonishingly low, so. There's nobody around to hire. Tim?
Yeah, Bob, I was just wondering, I mean, what's surprising to me is this then doesn't even seem to be related to the dispute over Cornell's contribution. So if, even if they made the contribution, would things change?
I got the impression it's not really for lack of funds, uh but it is for lack of like bus parts, um supply chain shortages. Uh, I don't think that TCAT is necessarily hurting for finances. It is more hurting for infrastructure, if you will.
Which is equally hard to address.
Yeah.
Thanks, Bob. Um, I see a to be determined on water quality. Uh, is it, is it to be determined who's who's gonna be interested in taking on this committee function? Or?
We, we don't really have. Someone that takes on that function at this point. It was kind of still on there. And I think a few meetings ago, we just discussed updating if there was something to update.
Yeah. Do we have anyone here who'd be interested in taking that on? Is a, there's a area of interest?
I think Cynthia Brock said that she would bring updates to this group since she's been involved in the other organizations working on water quality. And part of this group.
Be correct. Is that your recollection too, Cynthia?
Yes, that is, as I uh, I do currently continue to chair the Water Resources Council. I'm no longer the city representative for the Cuba Lake Watershed Intermunicipal Organization, but I do believe that. There are several of us here who participate in that organization. So between those represent, those organizations, we would be providing updates as they came forward. Um, at this point, I don't have anything to report on behalf of the Water Resources Council.
Okay, thanks. But we will look to you in the future.
I will do my best to serve.
All right, we now come to the necessary um part of our meeting. Where we choose to elect someone to the vice chair position. And after an extensive search for appropriate candidates, um the hands all point to. Gordon Hart. Uh, who uh has indicated that he's actually willing to take this on. Would somebody care to nominate him?
I will nominate Rorden Hart.
There's that a second?
Second.
That was Caitlin, I think, jump first. Are there additional nominations? I'm not hearing any. So I think we can do a voice vote. You know, all in favor of having Worden be our vice chair for the next year? They say aye.
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 Me too. Any, anybody else opposed? Anybody abstaining? Congratulations, Royden.
Thanks, Joel, appreciate it.
Now, I did mention that uh when we were reviewing, you know, when does the exchange in leadership change? Cuz bylaws indicate January first. Uh, it came to light that the change is supposed to be in by an in-person meeting. And unfortunately, we can't just say, well, let's just change the bylaws, cuz changing the bylaws also requires an in-person meeting. So at some point here, we probably ought to have an in-person meeting in order to change the bylaws. To uh enable us to conduct our business by video conference, which we have come to favor as a congenial way of doing things. So my question is, how do we get there from here? Should we? Should we, and and there's also the question of, you know, are there other things in the bylaws we might wanna change? Cuz if we, if there's anything in that warrants changing, it'd be good to address it all at the same time.
Yeah, Joel, I think it'd be great if there's a small committee, just to review the bylaws, to see if there's other changes that we should make and bring back a proposal. Maybe in the March or whenever we meet again. Uh, so we do it all at once and then, you know, if we meet in person sometime this summer or something.
Yeah, so it could, if there is such a committee, we could, the committee could solicit um, you know. Interest in in changes from the from the membership of the. Katrina sent everybody a copy of the bylaws and take a, take a look at them.
Unfortunately, they're not too long, so.
Yeah, they're not. They're pretty straightforward, uh, and. Um, as a consequence, there may not be a whole lot of changes wanted, but not a bad thing. So um, Rod, was that a suggestion that you um spearhead this committee?
Uh, no, I'm happy to. It was not a suggestion, but I'm happy to, as long as there's two or three others willing to be on it.
I I'm willing, anyone else?
I I'll join that committee too.
Okay.
And Mark, did I see your hand up?
Yeah, I'm willing to, if you, if you want.
But in as Joe just indicated, if if you're looking at it and have any thoughts, just send to me. I'd say in the next month, so when the committee meets, we have uh, if there's some ideas that you have or proposed changes, we have that in front of us.
So I don't know if we need to do that formally. We have a committee of Joe. Mark, Rod, and me. Who will. In the next month or two um review the bylaws. I come up with some suggestions, which will come to back to us in March. For consideration, maybe modification if or or not, and then I think. Uh, Katrina suggested we might not want to meet in March in person in order to deal with it. Uh, given the vagaries of the weather. Um, certainly there'll be no problem if we did it in. Where were the, what's the, what's the next meeting after that, in May?
May.
Yeah, is that an agreeable timetable for everyone? All right, then I guess we're good. So of course we don't need a formal action. Somebody would like to make that formal, we could. Now we just say it's an informal charge.
Joel, right now, right now, we're planning on an in-person meeting, May twenty-fifth.
Um. Well, why don't we formalize that? So I propose to be in person on May twenty-fifth. Okay. So I'll second that, that was a motion. Want to talk about it?
Who did you have for a second?
Um, I seconded it.
Okay.
Rob made the motion, uh, Bob made the motion.
Mm-hmm.
My understanding is we just need a quorum present at that meeting to make bylaw changes. So if a few people couldn't make it uh easily, we could let them zoom in.
Yeah, it's a dangerous thing to suggest, though.
I know, but I also know some people uh, you know, have tight schedules and it's hard to make the meeting, and so it would allow them to make the meeting. But obviously, most people couldn't choose that option.
Right. I said they wouldn't turn anybody away if they showed up on Zoom. Okay, I'm ready to vote. Um, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Anyone opposed? None? That is the end of our agenda. Do we have things we want to talk about next time?
Joel, we have to have two thirds of the membership present for, to change the bylaws. So we would need twelve people in attendance.
Okay, doesn't lie a lot of room for people attending by Zoom, does it?
No, there's really not, so.
Everyone would be coming into town for the Ithaca Festival Parade anyway, which I think is that night.
Oh, that's a nice thought.
I think, I think.
That would be. Cuz it might make parking interesting, but uh. But it would be a good thing to catch the parade same time, that would be cool. So for the next agenda, anything particular? Okay, related to the leadership team to compile it. Thank you all. I believe we have finished the agenda.
And and Joe, by the way, now I'm I'm wrong on the Ithaca Festival Parade. It's always after Memorial Day, so.
That's right.
Not a concern.
Right. Or a possibility, yeah. Mark?
Can I, can I uh just mention uh the green spot um thing quickly?
I forgot about it.
If there's enough time, okay, great. Um, I uh just to quickly give you the context, um so we have a charge point station here. At the town hall that was put in in two thousand seventeen. at the town hall that was put in, in 2017, uh, with mostly with nicer to funds. Um, and after about three years, then, uh, there was like a, uh, a grace period on their annual cloud services fee. So for our two-port system, that cloud services P fee each year comes to over $700. Um, yeah, into 21, they replaced the head um, to put a 4G head instead of a 3G head and that cost us a thousand dollars. Um, at any rate, these expenses are by, are not even close to compensated. We do, we do charge a fee for charging a modest fee. Um, but, uh, there's just not enough usage here at the town hall to generate um, funds to cover the clouds, even the cloud services fee. Um, so I think, um, and it's, I'm, just to be honest, I'm aggravated with having to administer this thing and worry about, uh, when it breaks and stuff. So, um, uh, from what I've learned from Green Spot and maybe Bob can chime in afterwards if he has other information or corrections, but um, I've been in correspondence, um, with, um, a sales representative, representative from Green Spot. Um, all they require from the host, um, and is, um, a physical location to put in the infrastructure. So they put in the infrastructure and they do all of the management. Um, there's no annual fee or anything and they, they share revenue. I think it's 10% of the revenue they share with the host. Um, and I asked him about, you know, how much do you charge? He said it, it uh, current electricity at, at 16 cents a kilowatt hour, they charge about 41 cents a kilowatt hour, which is not terrible. And, um, so what the only downside I can see to this green spot option is the host loses the ability to modify, um, the, the fee. Um, so, um, so, and they, they said they chart, they change out charge point, uh, installations all the time. Um, I, um, anyway, I'm, I've got a few references. I haven't called them yet. He gave me four references. Um, you know, their town's East Aurora, New York, um, that one's completed. So I'm going to call, um, contact that person at the town of Aurora. Um, now I'm trying to figure out why I shouldn't, why the town of Caroline shouldn't do this for their station. So, and I don't know if others of you are facing the same um, dilemma, you know, maybe you have higher usage rates at your stations that generate enough income to cover the annual cloud services fee. Um, and you're not beset with, um, um, cell service, uh, interruptions that difficult. So I just, it, it occurred to me, or you can follow up with me later if, if, if you think you're interested. So. And if you have a reason I shouldn't, we shouldn't do it. I definitely want to know.
Mark, Mark, the only, my recollection is the only downside was a 15-year commitment.
There's a time, there's a, you're committing to a period of time.
Yeah, the, the original contract came with a 20-year commitment. Um, at Tim's suggestion, I asked him if that could be modified. He said they would go down to a 15-year commitment. So.
And do they have complete control over what the charge is going to be?
Say that again? What?
Do they, do they have complete control over what the charge is going to be? In other words, if they decide they want to charge a dollar 29 next year, they could do it.
Yes, I think, I think they, I, well, I wanted to follow up with him. I asked him about the pricing and he gave me those numbers. He said at 16 cents a kilowatt hour, we would charge 41 cents. So I was going to ask him, is, is that the differential that you would always put on the cost of electricity at a station? Is that how you would determine that? So that's something I want to follow up on to see how they establish that. Yeah, we, we would want to be protected from, from gouging for sure, but.
Yeah, just if they're in the contract at a certain percentage above or whatever, that would, that would lock it in. Yeah. Well, thanks for bringing that up. Um, we are in that similar situation. Well, we're not in the same situation you are because we, we, we don't charge. Um, if you don't charge, you don't have the associated cost of, of dealing with the charging, but but then there's those who wonder whether you can do that, but the city does it. So why not? Yeah. Please, there's free charging stations in the city, right?
Yeah, I get that. Um, yeah.
But this is an attractive model because there's no cost in putting it in. Okay, Bob.
What Mark said is pretty much accurate with what was presented to the Enfield Town Board. This was last spring, so don't hold me to the specifics. And I don't recall the, uh, per kilowatt hour charges that Green Spot said at that time. Um, and I also don't recall too much discussion of the, uh, multi-year commitment, but uh, it's essentially, I think, a good deal. Uh, Enfield did not go for it immediately, just because we have other things on our plate at the moment, doesn't mean it won't. It just means that it kind of was one of those things. We heard the presentation and we moved on. So if the town of Caroline thinks it's a good idea, I would say that probably you should go with it.
Isn't there a benefit of like clean energy choice communities in terms of points you get if you actually do that?
I don't recall that being discussed.
I know that our energy, Dambie has an energy advisor. Jim Hollahan, who was former town board member. And I believe that's one of the things we're looking at in order to garner more points in the system.
Is that installing a, uh, electric charging station?
Yeah.
Yes, that, that is a high-impact action item with nicer to, absolutely. I don't know if it has a grant amount, um, associated with it, but it, it would help you towards accumulating, um, high, high-impact action items.
Yep, yep. Thanks for bringing it up, Mark.
Sure.
And I think we can, uh, with that, we can adjourn, right? So I don't think you need a motion. I think the chair can just say, meeting adjourned.
You're the boss.
Right. Thank you all. See you in a couple of months.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.